This time, it is my pleasure to call the October meeting. I'm your Hand of Borough Council of Orders. I request that we do two things in order. First, we stand and recite our amazing pledge of allegiance in unison. We'll follow that with a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. With the assistance of Assistant Secretary Myers, we will call this evening's roll.
Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Ms. Rowland?
Here.
Mr. Reichert?
Here.
Mr. Lockard?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Press?
Here.
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Greenholt?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mrs. Funk?
Oh, here.
And Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This time, I ask Solicitor Sholtes to announce the executive session that was held.
On September 28, 2022, from 7:44 PM to 9:05 PM, Borough Council adjourned to an executive session for personnel matters relating to a prospective municipal employee under Section 708(a) of the Sunshine Act.
Thank you. This time, we'll open up the in-room microphone and table to any in-room public comment. If there is any, please come forward, give us your name, address, nature of your concern. We will hear you.
Matthew Ziders, and I'm the owner of Green and Short's Family Dentistry at 238 Broadway.
Okay.
And my concern is the new parking meters, which I believe has been an issue for the week and a half that they've been in. The drastic change for customers, patients, going to these small businesses, we've really seen a complaint. So why the drastic change when it was a quarter? Now it's a dollar, I think a dollar twenty-five, just to get it to register. I know there's the mobile app. A lot of citizens don't really have access to a mobile app. So that is my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else in room? I'll ask for community media to help us open up online communications. If you're joining us via Zoom, you're able to unmute yourself if you'd like to address counsel. Okay, seeing none online, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting at this time. The Chair, at this point, requests a motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed.
So motion.
Second. Moving seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion carries. Forgive me, Counselor Lockard, I haven't done a Zoom delay. But I'm gonna try and keep it into my...
Yeah, that's okay.
That's all right, yep, yep. We appreciate you joining us, so. All right, at this point in time, we'll move into reports of standing committees.
I'd like, I'm making a motion to appoint Margaret Lewis as Borough Manager, effective December 1, 2022.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I would like to recommend that we table it because I don't feel at this time...
Just a recommendation is all?
Recommendation is all?
No, no, yes, you're moving to table it. Is there a second to table?
I'll second that.
A second to table. So just so everyone understands the mechanics of this on counsel, we will vote on the motion to table, and if it is successful, we will not come back to the original motion and vice versa. So at this point in time, is the, I will call the question, that being to table the motion on the hiring. All in favor of tabling the motion? Can I see a show of hands, because this is...
Wait, what's this on, how many?
Hand up for if you affirmatively want it to be tabled. Yes to table, hand up. One, two, three. Okay, you can put your hands down. All? I'm sorry, Chris?
Yeah, four, yeah.
Hands up?
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, it is four to table. Those against tabling the motion, I'm gonna ask you to put your hand up if you are in opposition to tabling. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six to four, the motion to table does not pass. Back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion?
With regard to...
The motion to hire. That's what we're voting on next.
So you want to hear favorable or unfavorable?
No, I'm gonna call your, I'm gonna, I don't need to hear that necessarily. I'm gonna ask your opinion of if you're voting for it or against it, or if you have discussion.
This is the discussion part of the motion.
This is the discussion part of the motion. Okay, all right.
I'll come back. Okay. Yes, Mr. Rowland, Counselor Rowland.
I think that we're making a mistake here, not with necessarily the candidate, but with the selection. We have... The whole process, in my opinion, has been very disorganized. There wasn't a hiring committee, a formal one, established. I don't believe that all of the council members got all of the information for the tests and so forth that we paid this Human Resources Agency to do. There was confusion last Wednesday night in the executive session about were we going to expand the qualifications or what? And I don't think we're set up to succeed here. I think we're setting ourselves up to fail.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Floor is yours.
Okay. I'm totally confused because I left the one session figuring that we were going to work out modification, but there were comments that were made that... There was a, I don't want to use the word recommendation, but it would be highly favorable for Margie to get the job. And I have no problems with someone getting a job, but I kept thinking, what are they talking about? I'm part of council, one-tenth of a voice, and I did not give approval. So that type of recommendation, or saying, well, we're pretty sure you have the job or whatever, that should never have been given until it came to the complete council. And then there was the interview. I think I could have asked better questions. Had I had the tests that were given to Margie on aptitude, psychological, I would have been able to ask more pertinent questions. And I feel being so locked out of this council right now and not getting the information that all ten of us should have had. And I don't know why there was such a rush by such and such a date, why we're closing it off to maybe other people giving ourselves a chance to... I mean, I came in on this with one manager. She's gone. But then I talked to all of you, and you tell me that you've had five managers since Bruce Robert. I mean, I'm appalled at what's taken place, but I'm also appalled that I didn't know what was going on. I'm not given the, I mean, you brought back information, but it was what you heard. All ten people should have been in on those interviews. They should have sat quietly while you appointed a spokesperson to ask the questions, and we would have all heard the responses at the same time. And so I'm just sitting here, and I feel completely locked out. I did before, and I'm not trying to stop a process, but I want the best we can get for our money. And I want to make sure. And I'm not sure. I want to know who all was involved in the interviews, why we weren't given pertinent information in regards to herring, Margie. We didn't get it all. And that's not fair to everybody that sits here. It's not fair to us. And I want fairness because each of us is representing our ward, the people that voted us in. We're government, and we are entitled to have what all the rest of you have. So if three or four of you were in private session and that information wasn't given to us, which it wasn't given to me, so I, do I have a problem with this? I do. I honestly see it being railroaded and not opened and looked at and give me all that I need to have to make that adequate decision. This is why you got a negative from me, not because I don't want Margie in. I just need to know more about Margie.
May I make a comment?
And how, no, you didn't give it, Marg, you didn't give it to me.
I'm gonna ask if you have more points to add, or the council...
I wanted to see the aptitude test. I wanted to see the psychological test given. I wanted to know a little bit more of what you were saying, but I kept saying to you, I kept saying to you for weeks now. Let us, let us be part of the interview. Let us sit quietly, but listen. And each one of us is picking up that person's comments. And what I may lack in a decision, you know, not having any questions or certain questions, you, Carol, may pick up a completely different thing and be able to add to my understanding. And that is so important to me.
All right, I'm gonna ask you, maybe, I can come back to you, but I'd like to let Dr. Rupp have his comment.
I think if I'm wrong, President Rickard, but I do not recall the last visitor, the last Borough Manager we hired, we did not see their psychological test. We did not see any aptitude tests. Those tests were scored by the company that we hired. That's pretty privileged information. We did not see that. They gave them a score, but we did not see every response they gave to that psychological test or that aptitude test. And I don't think that's our business.
On that note, I do, I'm curious as to why. And we're looking to hire somebody and vote someone in, and I don't understand why we wouldn't be, but if there's a clear reason why, I want to hear that reason why.
We trusted the firm that we paid to do it.
For starters, I'd just like to add this, and I really don't want to participate a lot in this conversation, but I don't believe an aptitude test was given. So I think you're using the wrong word.
Were there tests given to her? Were there questions that the company gave her?
There isn't evaluation given to her, but it is not my understanding that it was aptitude, and I have seen no results of anything.
We didn't see them from the last one.
Why would you, why would you have the tests given if you didn't get a response from the company?
Because that's the company, that's what the company takes care of.
That's what the company does to filter out the candidates.
We neither test the aptitude of counselors nor applicants.
Then we aren't asking the questions that we need to ask as a council. Because we're paying that company to do their job, but we're also paying to see the results. I don't pay for something I don't get. And that's why I'm saying, you know, if there is replies on Margie, give it to us. Let us look it over, or bring us in to the interview. Bring us, we're ten. We each have one-tenth of a vote.
Wasn't there an open council meeting on the interview?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Yes.
No.
I know I was in, I know I was in Virginia, I couldn't make it.
No, well, I was.
This was the interview you're talking about? Is this the interview? That she was here? No, I wasn't here for that.
Oh, when she came here?
That's the interview.
With the tea and the cupcakes or whatever. Yes, but at that point, that was one hour. You had, when you asked Margaret for her, when you had the interview, Bill, did you have the interview with her?
I participated in a phone interview with her, with staff, and Counselor Rowland was invited to be on it. I don't recall that he was, I don't think that he was.
What's that?
In the interview with, with the candidates.
The Zoom interview, were you on the Zoom interview with Margie?
I was in a face-to-face interview with her.
Yes, she's asking the chronology, so I'm just trying to...
I don't remember if I was in the Zoom interview or not, to tell you the truth.
Who was with you with that, in that interview?
Bill?
You two as councilmen?
Counselor Hager.
I was there.
Okay, Chuck?
You were at the original interview?
The first in-person.
I, for one...
The in-person interview?
The first in-person.
I, for one, missed, and I'll say this publicly. I, for one, missed that, that date. And I greatly regret it, and I think that it was important for all of us to take a moment and be there. I wish I could have, but I couldn't. Obviously, I have issues that keep me from attending everything, but I think we should. I think the value of this person filling this position, it's huge. It's huge to the, it's huge to the borough, it's huge to us, it's huge to our employees, and we should not take it lightly. And I know that we want to get this done, and I know we want to get this position filled, but this is not something that should just be decided on quickly. We need to vet out and have more than one option. Like you said, it's not about Margie. She, she looked great, but this is not about her, this is about how we did it, you know? And I think that...
I will go back and say again, I'm tired of hearing this one option. There were seventeen-plus candidates.
Understood.
They rise through the, through the process, they go through the interviews, they go through the testing, they go through the scoring. That's what you pay this recruiting company to do. And it gets to the end, it's like a funnel, and at the bottom, it comes out, and one marble can come out the bottom, that's it. So you can't say that it's one. There's seventeen-plus that went through it. So let's be fair to this conversation on the process.
But if that's the case, if that's the case, and I get that, I get that, Chuck. And if that's the case, then why are we even voting on this person? Because obviously, it's been chosen for us. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
It hasn't been because there were...
We're gonna make a vote.
You have time to talk, I will talk. I have the talking.
Wait, I want answers.
The fact is, is the process was, there was a Zoom introductory interview. There was a second interview. There was an in-person interview, which four council members attended, all right, plus staff. Then there was an invitation for the second interview, when she spent the entire day here looking at Borough facilities, looking at this, how our systems are operating, and the entire council was invited to participate in that. I, for one, was already in the one, and I was out of town. So you can't say that it's been decided for you. You have the vote now to make the decision.
Understood.
It's, that's the process. So I don't know...
Okay, but I wasn't at that interview.
But you were invited.
No, I, I couldn't, I was having trouble with the computer. It would have been nice had someone called me and said, you want to come down to the Borough, and do you want to join us? I, I, no, I was, I was left out.
You weren't left out, you were invited.
You said, okay, I don't really want to, but you left the cat out of the bag at our last meeting in here, at the executive. You said, oh, great.
We're not really supposed to be talking about it.
You want me to say it? You said, oh, great, we can be sued by Margie, because now we're gonna modify, you did. You said, now we're gonna modify, we're trying to modify something that should stay in place. And the thing is that we told her that she was very favorable to become the manager, that, and I knew nothing about this.
You're putting words in, and the fact is...
No, no, you said it, Chuck, you said it.
The process is the process.
I'd like to jump in, and this is supposed to be about responsible, constructive viewpoint about, is there anything that we have not talked about? Excuse me, Counselor Funk, but at some point in time, we have to make a decision. We can't just complain.
Fairly, fairly, Bill, fairly.
Fairly.
You're becoming part...
Counselor Funk, the process will be ten seated counselors here with you this evening, you being one of them, will cast their vote. That is the fair process.
No, you are eliminating our right to speak. You're becoming more limited to you than anything, Bill, I'm sorry.
Counselor Funk, there isn't anyone who's been attending this meeting that would say your right to speak has been limited. You have spoken more than anyone.
You shouldn't now, because you've got caught in things that were made up before it ever came to the rest of us. I was not invited for the interviews, the personal interviews, and I should have been.
There are counselors who, and individuals in this room that will remind you you were present at the meeting, that you met the candidate.
I met the candidate, but not in the two other interviews. You should have had all ten of us at every one of those interviews. And you didn't, why? You invited employees to meet, but you did not have all ten of us there. I want to know what the problem is, that we are representing our wards.
No problem, Mrs. Funk.
We are government, we have the right to be at these interviews. In fact, Solicitor Sholtes, I said, what do you mean? It goes against the sunshine law. And he said, well, in a way. And guess, no, that's exactly what you said, Tim. And I went back and did research. And I went back and did research and found out that all ten of us have a right to be at those interviews.
Solicitor Sholtes, would you like to respond?
Well, not directly to that, because I'm not quite sure.
Why not? Tim?
Can I finish what I'm saying?
Yes, but I want you to address what I just said.
Well, if this will help you, there were several also followed the same process you did that weren't at those interviews. I, the outline that Chuck gave is exactly what the rest of us experienced. I mean, you experienced the same thing I experienced with the interviews, and the same thing maybe Tim experienced with the interviews. I mean, that process was laid out.
What are you talking about, Barb?
We're talking about the process that Chuck laid out, and you said you were at the final, I was at the final interview, that's the only one I was at, too, the final interview with Margie.
But we should have all been there, Barb. We should have all had that right. We are representing the people of this town.
You were there, and so was I.
But I did, I didn't ask her questions that I would have liked to have asked had I been at those personal interviews.
Well, that was the process.
Oh, you don't have time to do it. Well, you know, there's a good one for the council.
No, I said that would have been the time to do it, you were there. That was the purpose.
No, no, I wouldn't, I, I did ask. I sat back, and I only asked two questions. One said, tell me the difference between leadership and management. I mean, I heard it all, but I'm saying those personal interviews before she came here amongst everybody. That was more like a teacup and coffee type thing. I want a good manager, but I want to know why some of you took it upon yourselves to have this two personal interviews, and the entire grouping of all of us, all of us, didn't have the right to be there to represent our wards. I want to know.
Mrs. Funk, vote no if that's what you'd like to do.
What?
Vote no when I call the question, if that's, if that's what you'd like to do.
No, you're becoming, no.
But we're...
You are, you're washing it away.
Don't, no, I'm not. You don't understand how we conduct business. A motion has been made, it has been seconded, we are discussing. We will eventually vote yes or no to the question.
I don't know how to make this council...
That's how we govern.
No, we have an internal strife here, and you know it.
I don't know what you're referring to. No, I do not.
Yes, you do. And the fact of the matter is that I have watched it for two and a half years, and I, I'm suddenly at the point where it's not fair anymore. It's upsetting our town, it is putting things into play that not all of us have the right to know. It's being kept just among several, and I'm trying to figure out why. And if you thought that you were gonna bring back to us when you sat in those personal interviews, everything that was asked of her, you didn't do it. And it did not allow me to ask pertinent questions because I didn't have knowledge of it. So when you do that, you take my people's rights away, my, my people of my ward, no, you do. Because you represent your ward, I represent mine. And you did it knowingly, and if not, then we all, you know, then I apologize, but I think you knew exactly what you were doing.
Was there not the previous process with the previous Borough Manager?
Chuck, there was.
I'm talking.
Oh, I know you're talking.
Wasn't a short group of fewer?
Yes.
The only time that the entire council met that candidate was the one interview that we had, that was it. Because there was a process, very similar process, right? Because we used the same firm.
And did we not agree to use the same process?
And the same firm, you're right.
We did, Counselor Hager. In fact, when we received the notification of the resigning, the letter where Manager Dunford communicated her resignation, council met and laid out this process whereby we would use the services of Team LMI, to which point we would use the existing evaluative criteria that we had previously used, which council also approved, to which point we, it was announced that in time, different counselors would be brought in to meet the individual as needed, but it was stated that we cannot all meet them together in an informal setting, because when you have more than five counselors, Counselor Funk, it constitutes a quorum of council, and we cannot do that outside. Why are you scoffing at the rules, ma'am?
That doesn't require a quorum, I already checked.
You said I want to...
I checked, and it does not break the sunshine law, this is personnel.
Counselor, excuse me.
This is personnel, Bill.
Counselor Funk, can you, Solicitor Sholtes was trying to give you the response earlier. Will you allow him to? Solicitor Sholtes?
I don't want to, what I wanted to say was to remind council that in the process of this discussion, council should not reveal matters that were discussed in executive session relating to this.
Definitely. You wanted it open, you let, you brought it up, you left it open, and you want to know why we're saying no. We're saying no, Tim, because, Bill, when you questioned, when you had the interview with Margie, when you asked the questions you asked, did you relate each and every one of those questions and the answers to us? From the inner, from the personal interviews, Bill?
So I would, excuse me for one second, I would say this to council. If council feels as though they want to discuss the specifics, we can go into executive session to talk about matters relating to the appointment of a prospective municipal employee. We can do that tonight, but that's up to council to decide. There's a motion, and it's on the floor.
I so motion. To have a, I want this done, and if we're gonna go back to get it done, we get it done now. This thing has to be cleared up, all, all ten of us. We have got to get our act together, and we're not. And certain information does not come to us. It doesn't come to us. Why? And, and I've been going through this for over two and a half years. It finally hit me like a bullet between the eyes.
Can I talk?
Yes, sir.
Did we already make a motion that we can't take this to executive session?
No, that's what you mean.
I say, let's just take it, I think we need to talk about it. Let's just take it to executive session and end what we're going through here.
Solicitor Sholtes, should council vote on executive session to go into executive session at this time, or do we have enough to go?
We still have a motion on the table, too.
We still have a motion, that's why I'm asking for the mechanics.
Yeah, so I think we should have a motion and vote to go into executive session, but I will say...
And that will supersede?
Well, no, it won't supersede the motion, we'd come back and address the motion.
Okay.
However, you know, we have to, if we're gonna go into executive session, it's about the issue, the personnel matter relating to a prospective municipal employee. That's the issue. There's no other proper issue to discuss in executive session.
Repeat that again, Tim, for the clarity for all of us.
If council decides to go into executive session, it's about that issue, that is, the appointment of a prospective municipal employee. There should not be any other discussion.
About what?
About anything else that's not proper for an executive session.
So we can't bring up the interview, is that what you're saying?
No, he's saying, like, for example, you wouldn't be able to talk about the parking meters or anything.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, all right, okay.
I'm gonna take Mrs. Funk as the mover of the executive session movement, and I'm gonna take Counselor Fuentes as the second to that. Counsel, in favor of going to executive session? I need an affirmative, aye.
Aye.
Maybe I should ask for a show of hands, I didn't see, sorry. So aye by show of hands. One, two. Counselor Lockard?
Oh, down there.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know what you were calling for, the first one was... Yeah.
I'm sorry, Counselor Lockard, we're... I'm sorry, Counselor Lockard, were you yes to go to executive?
I said, I don't know that it's going to be resolved in an executive session, but I guess.
Well, Chris, how do you think it should be resolved?
I really don't know. I wish I knew, but I don't know what to say. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what to say. I mean, you know, it's always nice to have choices. But I mean, if their confidence level is that high, I guess we got the best person then. I don't know. I'm just, I'm totally confused now.
I'm still trying to conduct the vote. The vote is to go to executive session or not. I believe I have one, two, three in favor of Counselor Lockard. You were against it or four?
Well, they can go into executive session.
So you're four?
Yeah.
I have four in favor of going to executive session. I'm going to ask for a show of hands. All against, raise your hand for executive session. Four, five, six. I have six against. Mr. Sholdas, we will not be going to executive session. Is there any additional points to the discussion of the question of the original motion, which has been duly seconded as to hire the candidate Margaret Lewis for borough manager position? Seeing none, I'll close discussion and call the question. All in favor, and I'd like a show of hands, please, because it's getting a little hard to keep track of this one. All in favor of the motion which was made in the affirmative to hire Margaret Lewis as borough manager, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. All against, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three.
Chris?
Excuse me, Counselor Funk, I'll call the vote.
Oh, sorry, Bill.
We try to do things according to order.
Yes, we do.
Counselor Lockard?
No.
No, you're against hiring. Sorry. You are not for hiring the candidate. Okay, okay.
Right.
That the record showed that the motion was to hire Margaret Lewis, the vote being six to four. Flipping the page over to page two, we'll move into Finance and Personnel Committee. Counselor Rowland?
Consideration of a motion to approve the advertisement of an ordinance levying Hannover Borough real estate tax for the year 2023 at a rate of 6.09 mils for an increase of .44 mils and setting collection rates thereon.
Second. Any discussion? Assistant Secretary Myers, I'd like to do a roll call on this. You can assist me with that.
Mr. Greenhalgh?
No.
Mr. Lockard?
No.
Mr. Hagbert?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Greenhalgh?
You need Mrs. You did Mr.
I'm a Mrs., yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Mrs. Greenhalgh.
Sorry, sorry.
Was your vote yes or no?
It's yes.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
Let's see. Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
No.
Looks like the motion passes seven to three.
Just for the record, when was the last time we had a milage increase? Does anybody know?
I think it's 2015.
Fifteen or seven?
Thank you. So it's seven plus years. It'll be eight by the time this is done. All right, thanks. Motion two, consideration of a motion to approve the advertisement of an ordinance establishing the 2023 per capita tax rate at $0.
So motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Counselor Lockard? Gotcha. Just kidding.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So that's currently $5, correct? And it's going to go to zero, $5 per person?
Per person, yes.
Right. I think the average household's 2.5.
Right. So to save us money.
Okay. Number three, consideration of a motion to approve the advertisement of an ordinance establishing a procedure for waiving additional charges assessed against the taxpayer who fails to pay real estate taxes in a timely manner due to failure to receive notice pursuant to Act 57 of 2022.
So motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of the question, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move into Governance and Policy. Dr. Rupp?
Thank you, President Rickart. I'd ask for consideration of a motion to approve Resolution Number 1355, authorizing participation in the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Junior Counsel Person Program.
Second.
Thank you. We've talked about this for a long time, and we can't add anybody until we pass a resolution that we're going to have the program.
Sounds good. All in favor, signify by the aye.
I have one question. Barb, are they going to get a vote with council? Are they just going to sit there like they do down at the?
They don't get a vote.
They're just going to be present.
And they can't attend executive sessions either.
Are we going to ask them for their opinions on different matters? Are they going to be able to express? Okay, all right, thank you.
I believe I was mid-vote. It sounded like there was all yeses. Were there any nays? Thank you. Dr. Rupp?
And consideration of a motion to approve Resolution Number 1356, approving the voluntary retirement incentive for eligible employees prior to January 1, 2023.
So motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Aye.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. If motion carries. Planning and Engineering, Counselor Hagberg?
Thank you. Consideration of a motion to adopt in an act ordinance number 2330, mending Borough Hanover Zoding Ordinance, ordinance number 2310 as amended, and the official zoning map enacted therewith as advertised and noticed, a notice pursuit of two law.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Counselor Rowland, are you leaving us?
I need to leave. I'm sick.
Oh, okay. Hope you feel better. Seeing no discussion, I will ask for Assistant Secretary Myers's help in doing a roll call vote.
Mr. Greenhalgh?
Yes.
Mr. Hagbert?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland is absent.
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Hagbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenhalgh?
Yes.
And Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Thank you.
He's going to leave me out of it. Oh, girl. It's yes.
Yes, very good. Overexcited there. Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Back to you, Counselor Hagberg?
Consideration of a motion to approve the advertisement of an ordinance comprehensively amending and supplementing and replacing the rental property ordinance number 1796 approved December 19, 1984, including revised provisions for rental registration and inspections.
I saw motion.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Aye.
One no? The rest are yea. Motion passes.
Consideration of a motion to approve Resolution Number 1357 for the preliminary and final land development plan for Title Wave Auto Spa, 500 Eisenhower Drive, Hanover, PA.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm saying no.
One no? Counselor Funk, motion passes.
And I'd also like to make that known because of the traffic conditions over there. That's the only reason I'm doing this.
Consideration of a motion to approve the utility easement for Homewood at Plum Creek for relocating, relocation of a water main.
Second. All in favor of that one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with the property owner and to ratify Resolution Number 1325 approved by Hanover Borough Council on April 28, 2021 for approval of plans for a reverse subdivision at Primrose Lane Lots 4 and 5 so the plan could be recorded.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed?
Yep.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, can you blow some fresh air into this?
I had a busy month in September. These are my mayor highlights for the month of September. September 8, I attended the Discover Hanover Night event by the Hanover Area Chamber of Commerce and the Public House at the Markets at the York Revolution. I spoke about everything Hanover Borough has to offer and our upcoming events. Then I got to throw out the first stellar pitch of the game, after which I was offered a contract to play for the York Revolution. But unfortunately, I had to turn it down. My duties here just won't allow it. Senator Kristen Phillips Hill was also in attendance. What they did, though, they told me how far I would have to throw it. But when I got there, it was actually further. So I was a little nervous because I'm standing like, wait, this isn't what I practiced. But anyway. September 15, York County Transportation Coalition meeting was held. The Coalition advises York County Planning Commission in its transportation planning activities. Subjects covered were bicycle and pedestrian plan, brake plan, and safety project evaluation reports. An example of the safety evaluation would be the Spring Grove Roundabout, which has significantly decreased the number of crashes. We were updated on the Hanover Trolley Trail Extension and the Eisenhower Drive Project, which is still under review due to a study request by the Susquehanna River Keepers and the Eisenhower Drive and PA 194 intersection analysis, which has been given to a consultant to study. After the Transportation Coalition meeting, I stopped by to see the restoration progress on the Lincoln Plaque Memorial on Railroad Street that I don't know that many people even realize we have. Steve Roy of Steve Roy Art Restoration has done an outstanding job bringing the plaque back to life. Steve Roy has a renowned reputation and has done restoration work across the nation on national treasures. Later that day, I had the pleasure of celebrating the ribbon cutting at Phoenix Physical Therapy located at 600 Carlisle Street, where they are here to help you get back to the activities you love. September 17, the Children's Miracle Network Hattie Fund filled an informational day held by Sam's Club. I was happy to support the fundraising event that supports the health of 10 million children each year. They are well-known for their dance marathons held at high schools and colleges. Everyone knows about Penn State. And of course, Hanover High School, they hold a very successful dance marathon every year. September 22, I joined Police Chief Martin, Lieutenant Bunny, and Borough staff in a meeting with Senator Mostriano's District Manager Judy Wilson and his field representative Leah Critchton. The meeting culminated with a tour of the Borough offices and police station. And I did have a question as to why they were here. And it was because it's the building projects that we are considering doing. We're looking to have some grant money, and we need Senator Mostriano's blessing for that. As long as, any grants we would apply for before January, because of January, regardless of what happens with the governor race, he will not be our senator because they have redistricted due to the census report. After that, we'll hopefully need Senator Kristen Phillips Hill's approval. All righty, so September 27, we welcomed Jersey Mike subs to Hanover with the ribbon cutting ceremony, where they presented an awesome donation check of $5,500 to Christie Lucas for Roots for Boots to assist local veterans. Make sure to go check out their fresh subs and salads. And lastly, September 29, I attended For Love of a Veterans Monthly Meeting. I was astounded by the plethora of services available to help our large veteran population. Great work being done by many organizations who are working together to support our veterans. I was really impressed. I felt like I was drinking from a fire hose. I had no idea they had that many different organizations working together to do so much great work. So thank you to these organizations for all that they do for our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move into our Fire Commission reports.
Bill, can I cut in just for a second? President, Bill? I just have something. I would like to just thank our mayor, Sue Whitman, for bringing these reports because I feel like, you know, she puts a lot of effort into putting it together. And I think it brings a lot of positivity to the room. I just want to address that because I don't think she gets very much praise for the amount of work she does doing that. I just want to point that out. Still positive.
Feels good.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, two more sunshine.
I hope so.
Chief Sunshine?
Mr. Sunshine.
So at our last Fire Commission meeting, just a few highlights. We discussed, last month, this council voted to authorize civil service to conduct a joint test for firefighter for the list. We spoke about that with the ICA, the Intercooperative Agreement, intermunicipal cooperative agreement. We felt it should go to the commission first, just so that they're aware of it. But that decision still relies with the municipalities as far as creating the list because the civil service is still with municipalities. So we discussed that a little bit. Those of you that have been driving by our Clearview Fire Station that saw it boarded up, it's now open. The only thing left to do is I got to get a new light and paint the inside. So, and our, under EMS report, COVID's still expected to be on the rise, along with RSV and the flu. So please be careful out there. Also, under EMS, we met with Representative Kate Klunk to get her support for a bill that would allow, or make the insurance companies whoops, sorry, pay us directly. Because we are not participating with other insurances. If you go to the hospital and your healthcare insurance, the hospital participates, you get a bill that says, well, your x-ray costs $1,000, but because of an agreement, we're only going to pay them $250, and it's all good. You don't have to pay anything. Same thing with EMS billing. So we're not a participating member. So they pay the patient whatever we bill. So if we bill them $1,000, the insurance company pays them $1,000. It's incumbent upon them to then send us that check. And a majority of the time, that occurs. But when it doesn't, we have to go after it. So we're trying, and it costs us money to go after because we got to go to a magistrate. And we've always won the cases, but we still got to have that outlay. So we're looking for support for that bill to get passed, which would make the insurance companies pay us directly, whether we're a participating member or not. One of the things we also presented for discussion for the board was to consider a contract for providing EMS services. Right now, we do little varsity JV football game standbys. We do standbys at the Chili Cookoff, the Snack Town Brew Fest, the Snack Town Street Fair. Typically, we do that with a unit that is in service. So we only have two units in service, so if we get calls, those units have to leave, which has created some issues to some of the events that, hey, they're concerned they don't have an ambulance. So the contract would allow us to charge them that we could bring staff in off duty and staff a third unit and be dedicated to their event. We also talked a little bit about the PA Recovery Services, which is a company that we could partner with that on larger fires or major incidents, we could bill the insurance company for some of our consumables and a base response fee. One of the commission members suggested that we could probably do this in-house. One of the commission members suggested that we could probably do this in-house because we're only going to look at maybe 10 or 15 calls a year that we would actually do that on, which is something that, quite honestly, our business administrator never thought about. And I think it makes sense to do that in-house. It's very easy. So we, if we decide to pursue that, if the commission approves that, we would likely come back to both municipalities, asking for a resolution or ordinance of some sort that allows us to do that. That's the recommendation of this PA Fire Recovery. They said because it just cleans everything up, and yes, the municipality is aware of it, that, that their fire department is going to do that, so. Over the weekend, we had a fire in Penn Township, and the house was gutted. It was started by a lithium ion battery. The owner had a electric bicycle, and he bought a brand-new lithium ion battery. He came home from work at 2:00 in the morning, plugged it in, went to bed. A little bit before 7, his smoke detector went off, he heard a loud pop. His dog started barking, he went down, and the battery was on fire the size of a campfire. He ran upstairs to get a blanket and towels to try to smother it till he got back down, which is only a minute or so. The entire room was engulfed. When we got there, the end of the pull table, which was a few feet from this battery, was gone. In fact, the entire basement was, was well-off and, and gone when we got there. So I am going to be making a push on our social media, all the websites, Borough website, township websites, urging people to be careful with the lithium ion. If you're going to buy, try to buy where it doesn't have to come across the big body of water to get here, because we don't know what the controls are when they build that kind of stuff. And we're going to recommend it, anything like that lithium ion you charge outdoors. Now, people have battery drills, we haven't had any issues with that, but the, these other batteries that you can order from overseas, we have.
What about, like, we have that for our blower and all, like, are those batteries?
They're probably lithium ion.
Yeah, I know they are, but if they're...
I, I think that if, if they are, from the manufacturer of the device, you're probably going to be okay, because they've tested them. The hovercrafts that you see, and I'm going to, and I sent to the Fire Commission a list of websites or YouTube videos of these, of these fires, and how quickly they develop. Some of the batteries, the one video I have, it looks like fireworks going off, and it actually shoots fire and particles 15, 20 feet away, so.
Yeah.
The, last thing I wanted to cover was, a few months ago, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, through Unified Construction Code, updated to the 2015, I'm sorry, 2018 International Building Code, as amended, as they amend it. So in the near future, I'm going to be partnering up with Engineer Mainz and the code enforcement to update the fire code to the 2018, as well as, they want to do the property maintenance code, so that they're all paired together. One of the things that, I bring this up now because I would like council to think about is, under the current code, we made amendments to the fire code when we adopted it prohibiting recreational fires, open fires, open burns, and fires in approved containers. When that code was adopted, the council at the time felt that whatever one person in the borough followed under the fire code, everybody would follow, which I am not opposed to, I'm just stating fact. I would like you to think about whether or not you want to continue with where we're at right now, which is, we amended it again to allow for propane or natural gas. So if you want to keep it that way, that's fine, but I bring it up now so that you can think about it, so when we do come forward to discuss it, it's not a, you know, something right away that you need to think about. So just for reference, fires in approved containers or outdoor fireplaces under the fire code must be 15 feet away from any combustibles, buildings, fences, dead trees, anything like that. A recreational fire, which is a fire pit, a campfire, has to be 25 feet away from any combustibles, bonfires, and open, other open burns, 50 feet. We don't really have open burns, because I don't permit them. We do have one bonfire a year, and that's at Hanover High School, in fact, that's tonight. And we always permit that because it's always well-maintained, we're, we're present for that, so. And then finally, I had a presentation that I wanted to give to you, and put it up on the screen and, in PowerPoint. However, till I got done with it, it was 40 slides, and I didn't want to take up your time. So, thank you. After talking to our administrator, she said that, Ms. Hill, she said that I should probably give this to you, something you can hold, look at, and read, and then we'll come back, and you can ask me any questions you want. So, but, sit, I'm just going to hand these out, it's a...
I want to do it too, I take a couple.
It talks about the commission, how it started.
Are you going to test at the end?
No, no, it will be, but it will be...
I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
Do you want questions?
Yeah, okay.
I'll just point out, Chief meant questions next month after you've had a chance to digest it, not tonight.
Do you have enough?
There's a bonfire.
I just didn't grab enough.
What time's it start?
I should be.
I know, you should be.
Thank you.
Everything's good so far?
Where is it happening?
Oh my, yeah, we didn't want to get into this. Is that all you got, Chief?
That pretty much is all I have. I will be sending this to Dory in PDF. I'll also send her a copy of the intermunicipal agreement because it's referenced in here, so that she can distribute that to you.
Tony, on that contract for off-duty staff, okay, that, in other words, you have like two, two ambulances or whatever out.
Yes, yes.
Okay, when you do that contract for off-duty staff, are they, if they are on regular salary or whatever, is that overtime for them?
No, we would bring in part-timers.
Oh, is that the way you would do that?
To, to staff an event, for a special event, we would bring in our part-time staff. Our full-timers also work a rotating schedule where they have a week that's short, so they could work up to 16 hours and not...
Oh, okay, okay. And the other one, on those lithium batteries, did, did you use water to put it out or chemical?
Water.
You, you used water on it?
Yeah, because the fire was sort of, the entire basement was, so all the wood, plastics, everything was burning.
Okay, and on the cars, and I just have to ask this, electric cars, okay? I was told that they can burn for hours, and that it takes a humongous amount of water to tackle the fire if it starts. Is that true?
It is.
That is true?
Yes. And we have a plan for that. I'm going to call AJ Grimm, ask for a 40 cubic yard dumpster, have Mike's towing, pick it up, put it in the dumpster, and we're going to fill the dumpster up with water and let it sit there for however long it takes to make sure it's out.
Wow, okay.
Otherwise, I'm going to hook up a, a fire hose to hydrate and waste an awful lot of water.
Right, was that your idea, or did you, was it...
No, it was actually one of my captain's ideas.
No kidding?
She said we should do that.
I love it, I love it. Thank you.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Is there any public comment in the room?
I do have something. Just something really quick. In the last issue of the Gettysburg Magazine, there was an article about a lot of women-owned businesses. I bring it to your attention, not because of women-owned businesses, but they want to be here because the Borough is shining bright again today, thanks in great part to reignite downtown business history. So that's good, that's a good thing people want to be here.
Excellent. Mayor Whitman?
I just want to remind everybody, tomorrow night's the Halloween Parade.
Yes.
I've been practicing my wave.
Are you going?
And just wanted to let every, you all know that pretty much every day, I get complaints about the parking meters, so I have been fielding those over to Eric Mainz and AJ and letting them have at it, so.
I've got several as well.
Yeah.
But I must say that hopefully by the end of the month, we will have a parking demand study, and there should be hopefully some recommendations on how to deal with it.
Well, one of the things he...
It's a work in progress.
He did tell me was, I've gotten several complaints about, if somebody just wanted to go into, say, Davina's, they called in and ordered for a pizza, and they just want to stop in, pick it up, and go out. They don't want to have to pay $1.25 for a whole hour when they don't need an entire hour. So he did say he's having Justine put a list together of businesses that it would be appropriate to have some designated meters in front of, that you can maybe put a quarter in and get 15 minutes. So they're working on that, and he did say it's going to, but now, the confusing part is, I was, I have a letter I just got today, where they're saying, nothing's telling people when you get there that you have to put in five quarters. So people are putting a quarter in, and then another quarter, and they're wondering like, why, they think the meter is broken because nothing's registering until you put five quarters in.
That's true.
So, but the response that this lady got when she spoke to her, she said they were very polite and all that, but that they were saying that there was, on the meters themselves, there was information telling people this, but I don't know, because I keep getting that one over and over and over, so I don't know, I haven't really gone and looked at the meters to see if there's information on each meter saying, meter will not register anything until you've put $1.25 in. And then the other thing that happened to some people was, they were caught off-guard, so maybe they put three quarters in, and now they are realizing, oh, I need two more, so they go around to their vehicle to get two more, until they come back to the meter, it's timed out, and they got to start back to square one again with five quarters.
Yeah.
So they're not too happy about that either.
Did you get phone calls on this?
Oh, like, every day I'm getting a phone call, a letter, something.
Yeah, so did I. I got four so far.
Might need to update.
And I just said...
Quickly ask questions.
Call the Borough.
Well, I just...
I'm sure somebody can explain it, or if we know that there's a problem, we can try to make it better. Is that system able to, can we, can we make it better? I mean, is it set up that we can't make any changes, or can we make changes on that system?
Can change it.
We can?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
That's why I said it's a work in progress. It's complex.
Any other in-room public comment before I open this up online? Community media, anyone online?
If you're joining us online, you're able to unmute yourself, click the little microphone icon to address counsel.
Hello?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Hi, Justine Coxis with Main Street, Hanover, for York Street. Just want to share a quick, a follow-up on Mayor Whitman's comment. It's not that I'm putting together a list of businesses who need 15-minute or short-term parking, I'm looking at areas where multiple businesses could benefit from that quick drop-off, quick pickup parking zone. But I just wanted to clarify that a little bit, because I know sometimes our Main Street program can, it seems as though maybe we're working more for businesses of a certain kind than we are of others, but I think I'm looking holistically at how to kind of give ideas to Eric on where these short-term pickup and drop-offs can go. So just a small point of clarification, but I agree, there are a lot of questions. We know this, that folks are hesitant to read through a lot of the stickers that were placed on the meters, and I think it's going to take some time to adjust to, but I think in the long run, it is going to provide funding to make improvements to the parking that is there. So without being able to build up additional funds, the lot in their current condition only can remain at what it is. So it's, it's kind of one of these growing pains that we're working through, but yeah, I, I am looking at places in which a short-term parking zone, if you will, or some sort of identification could be placed that would benefit the business community, and exactly like Sue Ann had mentioned, you know, people picking up a pizza, going to pick up something from a store quickly. So there are opportunities like that with the passport system, which is, I think, why Eric wanted to kind of adopt a system like that. Thank you.
Anyone else online?
Yeah.